At this time, I will call the With County Board of Supervisors meeting to order for June 11th, 2013. I'd like for everybody to please stand while the invocation is given by Reverend Lee Wiggins of the Living Hope Baptist Church and remain standing for the sake of allegiance laid by me. Reverend Wiggins?
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we do thank thee, our God, for all your goodness and for all your blessings to us. Thank you for our great country and pray, Father, that you would indeed continue to bless us and help us, Lord, to seek your face as a nation. We ask our God for wisdom for our leaders, from the president on down to the local level. Especially pray tonight, our God, at the With County Board of Supervisors meeting, that you might be with us here to guide every decision made, that you would give wisdom and discretion and last every effort to improve our community. We pray that all things done and done would be to your glory and to the glory of Christ, our Savior, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business today is a presentation by the With County Historical and Architectural Survey. And Ms. Mary, do you have the other gentleman with you?
No, it's just I.
You're not going to join it tonight?
I'm solo.
Okay.
Don't be disappointed.
I had an opportunity, by the way, to see this presentation last night, I believe.
Oh, good. Well, last night, I was the only item on the agenda, and tonight, it looks like I'm not the only item on the agenda. And so, I might go through it a little more quickly, so that you all aren't here all night. Basically, the project was a partnership between, and I apologize, I turned my back to you all, but pictures out there, you're better looking than I am. It was a partnership between Virginia Department of Historic Resources, the county, and the Historical Society, and the William &amp; Mary Center for Archaeological Research, and Hanbury Preservation Consulting did the field work. There are a number of deliverables for this project, one of which is this slideshow. After I get comments from last night, tonight, I might make some revisions, but otherwise, it's pretty much what you see, and it will have a script. One thing that came FedEx for me today at the hotel, which I didn't have last night, is a draft copy of the report, which is another one of the deliverables for this. I want to talk a little bit about the impetus for the survey, and most of this information is whether it be a barn, like this house on Virginia Avenue in Max Meadows. This is a house on Pepper's Ferry Road. It's set back somewhat, and as you see in the upper left, is in some state of disrepair. But it had five agricultural outbuildings. I've shown two, a large barn on the right, and then down below it, a log smokehouse. And those are actually between the house and the road, and very visually prominent. Finally, one of my favorite ones, Fracture Creek Farm, which is an eye house. See, you recognize it, I'm sure, when you saw it, even though it's got uneven bays across the side, in the Greek Revival style, has a phenomenal, phenomenal barn. It's a four-pen log bank barn from the early 19th century, in great shape. It's massive and still being used, you know, actively by the owners. Great, great, great barn. There are a couple of agricultural resources that were not associated with domestics. There was a barn on Stony Fork Road to the left, and then this silo on Kaiser Road, and finally, this dairy barn on Red Hollow Road. In terms of commerce and trade, we had 25 resources. They included stores, commercial buildings, a hotel, and a blacksmith shop. Here are two of the stores, one on Austenville Road, which is a 20th century store, and then Mom's Old Curiosity Shop in Max Meadows, a frame building with a somewhat unusual parapet roof. If you can see, it's really a gable roof with that projecting rectangle up in the front, which is called a parapet. And I say it's unusual, but then I found another one in Ivanhoe, but this time rendered in brick on the bottom. And I was corrected last night that the commercial building on the left is not on Baumgartner, it is on Bumgartner in Rural Retreat. So, a nice diversity of commercial buildings, again, including this blacksmith shop on Francis Mill Road. In terms of religion, we had 28 resources. All of them were Christian churches, built between 1850 and 1950, and again, a diverse collection of styles, including the Greek Revival, Gothic Revival, Victorian, Colonial Arrival, and Romanesque. The Max Meadows United Methodist Church, a wonderful Romanesque example, Grace Lutheran Church, Victorian. Two great examples of Greek Revival, the Galena Presbyterian Church, which is the gable that has the cross piece that goes across it, which is called a pedimented gable, that's supposed to look like a Greek temple. And again, it's got the corner boards. And the abandoned Union Church, again, that has a broad, raking Greek cornice. In terms of education, we had 14 classifieds as education. All were from the first half of the 20th century. Some were still active, some have been repurposed, and some of them are vacant. These are two that are still used, both Colonial Revival churches, excuse me, schools, the Speedway Elementary and Jackson Memorial Elementary. Both of them have additions, and I kind of did some artful photography here, so you'd just be looking at the historic parts. But the most wonderful thing about having those additions, that means that the historic building continues to be used as well. And they're really great. A lot of schools across, these were not, don't appear to be standard plans, but a number of, there was a sort of a whole wave of Colonial Revival school building in Virginia in the first part of the 20th century, and so that certainly fits with that ethos. Here are some that are abandoned, one on Fleming Road, the Matthews School to the right, and then the Ivanhoe School, which I just couldn't get enough of. It's deteriorated pretty badly, and the only thing that's left are the exterior walls, but the exterior walls are solid, and it was clearly, at one point, an incredible school. And a pretty significant expenditure, it was an architect-designed school, pretty heavy expenditure of funds, again, for a town that's small. It's not necessarily what you would expect. In funerary, we had nine. Two were exclusively funerary, the others were funerary and religion, which makes sense, because they'd be graveyards that were associated with churches. The two exclusively funerary were the Davis and the Bethany Hill Cemetery. In terms of government, law, political, and I apologize, because you all are politicians, we don't have very many of them, there were only six, and I guess that's because they kept all the politicians in Withville. And one of the things about this survey is that because Withville had been so heavily surveyed, I was told, for the most part, to stay out of Withville and to go out into the county. There were two post offices and four rescue squads. The post offices, while not identical, are very similar, they're little frame, one-story front gable buildings, just big enough, I guess, for a couple of post boxes and a stove to keep you warm in Foster's Fall and Speedway. And then, the fire departments, which I will agree are not the sexiest buildings you've ever seen, but there are at least three of them that look very similar. And what that says to me is that, at one point, the county had a coordinated program to improve their health and safety outreach by having a series of these built in places so that the response time could be quicker. So, there was an entire program of building. In terms of industry processing and extraction, we recorded eight. We did, three of those were things that had previously been recorded, that Historic Resources specifically wanted us to look at, and those were the furnaces that we looked at. We had a one mill, a coal yard, two company stores, and a lumberyard. These are the mills. Every time I came to With County, I drove, I made, I mean, a furnace, I made sure I drove by one of the furnaces, because they are just so incredibly beautiful. And it was a real treat. I told folks last night, I'm a flatlander from the tidewater, and we just don't have that in that part of the state. And you all do, and they're really remarkable and really special. The Beverly Mill, also known as the Cripple Creek Mill, that's been somewhat altered in terms of siding and what have you, but still retains its integrity of location and form. And then, the Thompson Coal Yard, which still has the drive-through scales underneath that portico chair in the front. In terms of social, we only had four resources. Two of them are Masonic Lodges, one in Ivanhoe, and then the Mount Airy Masonic Lodge in Rural Retreat. We also had the Ruhr Chan Club, the Landmines Ruhr Chan Club, and the Patterson Community Center, which I suspect, at one point, was a school given its architecture and its style, but now a community center. Recreation and Arts, we only had two. One's a little bit of a stretch, but I included the Mill Creek Studio, which we'll see in a couple of minutes, because there is a contemporary weaving studio there. And then, the Big Walker Lookout Tower, which is, again, a wonderful resource. My colleague at William &amp; Mary, David Lewis, kept on saying that it originally had been a fire tower, and I said, "No, if you do the research, you will find it was built specifically and purposely for tourism," which is fairly unique. And there's a great story. If you haven't been there, they've got all sorts of wonderful historic photographs and documentation on the walls and the store. Healthcare medicine, we had one, Dr. Grubbs' office, a small, little frame office from about 1910. For technology, also one. This is the New River Gauging Station in Ivanhoe. It's right by the New River, and within it, there's a mechanism that goes underground and into the river, and it gauges the volume and capacity of the flow of the river. And now, through current technology, it's collected and sent through satellites to the internet, providing real-time statistics about the current and the flow of the river. So, I learned a lot about gauging stations. Again, once you've seen one, and you know what it is, you start seeing them everywhere. And a lot of the more contemporary ones are pretty ugly, and I don't have one of the detail shots, but that's a really nice poured concrete with some nice formwork and molding, sort of almost a cornice around the top. So, again, built around 1920, when there was a real level of care, and, you know, they could have just done something a lot plainer, but they put that nice cornice at the top. In terms of transportation and communication, again, a lot of the resources in the county that are under that theme had already been documented, so therefore, off limits to be. But I did include two former gas stations, the E.T. Lures Building on Sheffey School Road to the left, and then the Students' Corner Convenience Store on the right. I'm going to quickly go into the intensives. Again, we had 20. We worked with the Historical Society to come up with a shortlist. We tried to find a diversity of type, age, use, style, and geographic region within the county, so that we could have some broad representation. We tried to focus on what we thought were key, significant resources. We tried to focus on resources for which interior photographs would be value-added, the example I used last night. The Big Walker Lookout Tower would not be necessarily a good candidate for intensive, because you can already see the inside from the outside. So, we wanted to try to get into places that might not be as accessible. And then, finally, is access. This is private property. We talked to property owners. There were a number of sites I would have given my eye teeth to get into, but the people said no, and you have to respect that and move on down your list and find someone who's willing to let you come inside. So, some of the ones that we had initially proposed, we had to drop back ten and punt. This is Quaker Meaning House in Speedway. I think it's probably, if I have to pick, other than the furnaces, the most, what I think is the most significant piece of architecture I documented, this would be it. Some documentary sources say it's about 1870, but it's clearly earlier, probably about 1820. It's incredibly high-style, Greek Revival architecture, that really looks like it could be in the Low Country of South Carolina. It is not typical for this part of the world. It is a masonry building, and they've put stucco on it, and then they've scored it with a tool or a knife, so that it looks like it's stone. And the irony is, if you were in South Carolina, in the Low Country, you wouldn't have any stone, and that's what you'd do to make it look like it was stone and fancy and expensive. You have all the stone in the world here, and could have built a stone church, but yet you adopted that style, which I just think is very funny and ironic. It is a great, great building. A lot of hay storage and some failure in the flooring there, but really, just a knockout. Another great one is the St. Patrick Catholic Church, just outside of Speedway. Again, does not currently have a congregation, but still owned by the Catholic Diocese. The interior pictures are a little dark, because there is no power. That building does not have plumbing, it does not have electricity. There's some big strings of lights that are hanging from the ceiling, and every once in a while, they'll pull a generator out. But basically, no power, no lights, and the windows were shuttered shut with big, heavy boards, so we couldn't open them up to get light. But wonderfully simple church, great interior, what's called ship-lap siding, where the boards just butt up against each other. And there were still some interior appointments, I think, on that left-hand side, you can still see they had copies of the Stations of the Cross. So, a nice, early, about 1910 Irish Catholic church. Huddle Memorial United Methodist Church, a great Victorian/Gothic Revival church, not a pure Akron style, and we'll see one of those later, but has a wonderful partition door separating the worship space from the Sunday School and the office space. Charity Primitive Baptist Church, again, a really kind of a hallmark example, Primitive Baptists, and it's not a denomination I'm hugely familiar with personally, but they didn't believe in spending a lot of money on their facilities. They wanted them plain and simple, and often, they don't spend a lot of money, I mean, they maintain them, but they don't add on to them. That's sort of the whole tradition of the Primitive Baptist, is something very plain and simple and not distracting. You're there to talk to God and not look at the stainless windows. So, again, it's very typical and a really nice example. The Living Hope Bible Church. See, I told you it'd be here, I'm so glad you stayed. I was so excited when I saw he was speaking. This is in Rural Retreat. It was originally a Presbyterian denomination and later repurposed. It was the Rural Retreat Presbyterian Church, which began as the Blacklick Presbyterian in 1851, then known as Mount Airy Presbyterian. It was dedicated in 1893 as Rural Retreat Presbyterian. In doing some research, we found some really great historic photographs, and we know that underneath the siding, particularly on the steeple, there's some really great decorative shingle work, which we're hoping is still in good condition. The Rural Retreat United Methodist Church is a great example of what's called the Akron Plan, and that is a church that has a worship space that's known as a rotunda, and then a series of partitions that lead to two stories of Sunday School and office kind of spaces. It was named for, originally, a church designed in this style in Akron, Ohio, which is why it's called the Akron Plan in 1872. But through pattern books that people read, the style and the plan became extremely popular. And this is a really good example. It really has not been messed up too much in terms of subdivision of the space. It still reads as a very pure example of an Akron-style church, and it's got a fabulous ceiling there at the bottom. Moving on to schools, this is the Corinth School, and I told you that some of them had been repurposed, and this is one. It is now a gentleman's auto body repair shop. According to some court research done by Mary Kegley, a neat schoolhouse with at least three rooms was planned to be built by the Blacklick District around 1906, and we believe that that refers to the Corinth School. It's got a great stone foundation, and if you can see in these pictures, the one on the bottom, the interior partitions for those three rooms are all still there, not only the cased openings, but also the partition doors themselves. And then, on the left, it still has the blackboards and the vertical beadboard siding. So, despite the cars and a lot of the tools, it still very much looks like the school, and the owner is very proud of it, and he said that, at one point, the Carter family came and gave a concert in that school. I wanted very much to get at least one good agricultural resource for a survey, and luckily, was granted access to the interior of the barn at St. Peter's Road. Because agriculture is so important to the community, I just thought it was very important that we have a good agricultural resources. It's also a great log structure, and I wanted, you know, so we kind of got two hits on that, and likely built before the Civil War. So, it's log, it's old, and it's agricultural. Has large silos on the back, and again, still remarkably used currently in the current day. Again, there was a small calf in that building when I visited. I learned a lot about cows on this project. This is the Carpenter's Grocery. It was originally constructed as, to serve employees of a local mining company. It's somewhat modest, but it is also Greek Revival. The exterior picture doesn't show incredibly well, but it's got broad, raking cornices underneath that gable, and corner boards as well, that we saw in the Galena Church and the Union Church. So, a really nice, stripped-down, modest Greek Revival church. It's still got the same interior plan, it's still got the historic shelving, you know, the dry good drawers at the bottom still have the original hardware, and it continues to be heated by a coal stove. To contrast with that is the Students' Corner Convenience Store. It's smaller and certainly more recent, but, you know, it's the same basic plan. A country store is a country store. You walk in, the shelves around the inside, and maybe one display in the middle. So, some things don't change that much. It's not associated with a mine, but it originally had gas pumps, and also reflects the growing importance of the automobile to commerce and trade, specifically given its location at a prominent intersection on the Grayson Turnpike. I told the folks last night, if you've not been there, it serves the best french fries you've ever eaten. It is a great, great little institution, not only architecturally, but in terms of the business of houses. When we get to some of the houses, we did do interior photographs, but during the course of the survey, as I met with some of the residents, they were a little concerned about where these photographs would be shown, and I've made a commitment that although the interior photographs will be with the county and the Historical Society and the state, that since this is a public venue, I wasn't going to be showing pictures of their bedrooms and stuff, because it just didn't seem respectful and because they asked. So, I hope that that's all right. If you really are burning to know what the insides of these look like, you will be getting the photographs and can see. This is the Huddle Farm. It's been in the Urhart Huddle Farm family since the early 19th century. The house and the surrounding outbuildings are an excellent example of an intact working farm with outbuildings spanning over a century, illustrating the evolving of a large and prosperous family farm. It's got a great barn with a stone foundation. The house is an interesting example of the folk Victorian eye house and classical revival forms, which shows the evolution of a house that has stayed in the same family, but needed to grow and evolve to meet the needs of the people who lived there as time passed. I showed you Mill Creek Studio. If you see kind of in the distance, there's the weaving studio we saw earlier in Recreation Arts. The house was built in 1911, and it's just a wonderful example of domestic Victorian architecture. Interior, it retains its pocket doors, it's got fantastic mantles, it's got paneling in the rooms on the first floor that is thought to have been replicated from a neighboring church. And along the stair wall is a wonderful example of great recessed paneling that's fairly sophisticated and in great shape and intact. And Evelyn Lehman, who owns it, was really wonderful in terms of sharing information with me, and very, very enthusiastic and supportive. This is a house at 152 Poplar Drive. I do have an interior, because it's not currently being occupied. It's another good example of Victorian domestic architecture, this time in a more exuberant Queen Anne variation and rendered in frame. The asymmetrical massing, the wrap porch, the canted bay there to the left, and the brackets and vergeboard are all hallmarks of the style, and currently, the interior's being renovated. The house at 106 Brown Town Road, another log houses, one of the few inhabited log houses documented during the survey. It does have a rear frame addition, but this shot, you don't see it, and you really get a sense of the size and the scale of how people lived in the early 19th century in the county. Although, according to the residents, the deed dates to the 18th century, we believe the building dates to the early 19th century. And the primary living space on the first floor has a large hearth and fireplace. When I talked about inhabited log houses, this house on Ramsey Mountain Road is also an inhabited log house. Usually, when you see an eye house, see, it's an eye house, with an addition on the back, and the addition is called an L, the addition is later. In this case, that L, which you see in the photograph on the left, is actually a log building that has been covered with weatherboard, and the facade and the porch were added later. It serves as a nice contrast to the house I just showed you on Brown Town Road, because it shows a different way that a log house has been adapted for continued use in the 21st century. The last of the log dwellings on Major Graham's Road is thought originally to have been a kitchen for a larger house that's now been destroyed, and the size and the scale of the fireplace and chimney would support that theory. It's now, however, used as living space, and the frame addition shelters a chimney that may have served dual spaces, not only the interior of the log building, but the addition as well. According to Mary Kegley, as recently as the mid-20th century, the county contained several hundred examples of log construction, and now, there may be a few dozen examples. So, we were very pleased to find and document as many log houses as we did. This house on Pepper's Ferry Road is a good example of the Italianate style. As with the Mill Creek Studio, the scale and the architectural sophistication of the house are sort of unusual for being so far away from sort of a town center. It really does stand alone in that section of Pepper's Ferry Road. The interior retains significant features and trim, including mantles and the stair, and the exterior has the massing trim and brickwork details, such as the candid bays and the arched window openings and brackets indicative of the Italianate style. It also has at least one historic fixture. And again, I figured if I was looking at the ceiling, I wasn't showing you anybody's The house at 301 West Bumgartner Avenue, also known as the Hotel Sprinkle, was built in 1857 with subsequent additions. The large room on the front, if you look at the photograph to the right, on the first floor towards the right, served as a dining room, and then, the major core of the building has a transfer stair hall that serves numerous rooms on all three floors. It's also empty and currently for sale. The rooms on the first and second floor have been somewhat obscured, a lot of modern carpeting and wallpaper, but on the third floor, the carpeting's been pulled out and the vertical wainscoting's been exposed, so the rooms on the third floor look like the one on the left and give a little sense of the historic appearance, probably of all of the rooms when it was first built. This building also was for sale and vacant at 468 Ward Branch Road. It's an early federal-era house, and one of the better preserved of a number of houses we saw that had dual entrances. It's sort of hard to see in this photograph, but under that porch, there are two front doors. And if you look around and drive around the county, you might see a lot of these houses that have two front doors. We believe that it is a variant, and excuse my German here, a fleurkuchenhaus floor plan. This was a German plan. A lot of people who came to With County came down the Valley Road from Pennsylvania, and you see it a lot. And the strict interpretation of this plan is three rooms on the first floor, usually with a chimney in the center, with dual front doors and a winder stair. This building is a little different. The chimneys have been moved to the exterior, and it's only two rooms on the first floor, but it does have the winder stair. If you look to that picture to the right, the steps go up to a door, and they immediately turn and go up 90 degrees. And it does have the dual entrance. So, we believe, you know, while it's not a strict fleurkuchenhaus plan, that it's something of an adaptation of a traditional German building style that came with the Germans who migrated here. All right, we're getting close to the end, because I'm losing my voice. Our last intensive is the John Repass Rock House, or Greystone, built circa 1820. John Repass, who built the stone house, was a son of the Reverend Jacob Repass, a minister of the German Reform Church, who came from Germany to Pennsylvania about 1750. He lived there until the close of the Revolutionary War, when he immigrated to With County. Like the house on Ramsey Mountain Road, it has a rear L that is not an addition, but is actually the original portion of the house. It's smaller, with a larger chimney stack, and the front part that you see on the facade is later. I had documented the exterior of the house earlier last year, and when I was trying to get intensives, and it had been turned down for some of the ones that I wanted to do, I went and knocked back on the door, and the gentleman who had let me take the pictures of the outside had passed away. But his son, very graciously, said, "Let me check with my sisters," and called me back the next day and said, "We'd be more than happy for you to document the insides." So, I'm very grateful. Again, it was still full of a lot of personal effects, so the only interior picture I'm showing you is a really nice detail of a fireplace mantle. All right, we're into the home stretch, recommendations. We think that further comprehensive survey could be done in With County. We did look at 375 resources, but I'd say there probably may be 100, 150 that could be surveyed, including some things after 1950, and revisiting, again, some of the earlier recorded resources, since we were given a limited allowance of those. I'm getting ahead of myself. Pursue National Register designation. Once the intensives, those 20 that we did, the interiors are taken to the state, they're going to look and see which ones they think could be put on the National Register of Historic Places. And the ones that they think are eligible- And the ones that they think are eligible ought to be pursued. There's no abridgement or diminution of any private property rights that comes with National Register listing. It's purely an honorific and it's also the threshold to a number of financial incentives that I'll talk about later. But it's, you know, it's sort of a know-when, I mean, a low-lose proposition in that you get this honorific, but it's not like living in Old Town Alexandria where they can tell you how you can paint the exterior of your house. It's really just a designation. We saw four potential historic districts, Rural Retreat, Newtown, which is part of Austenville, Ivanhoe and Max Meadows. And then again, there's Newtown and Ivanhoe there. Again, with National Register listing of these districts, tax incentives and financial incentives for rehabilitation are available to any of the contributing buildings within the district. A multiple property documentation is a little more obscure in terms of a preservation tool. But when you have a class of resources that have something in common and you write the historic context for those and sort of list the ones that are within the region, then if any of them want to pursue National Register designation, the process is really simple because the heavy lifting is all in that what's called an MPD. And I thought that absolutely the furnaces should have an MPD that tells the history of them and shows where the ones that are still there and the schools. They're great tax incentives for the rehabilitation of historic structures. Again, generally they need to be listed or eligible on the National Register. But there are at least three different kinds of credits for any building built before nineteen thirty-six that's not historic. You can get ten percent of your rehab costs back as a credit against your taxes. For those that are historic, you can get twenty to forty-five percent as a credit against your tax liability. Basically, the building has to be historic. You have to spend a threshold amount of money and the rehab work has to meet certain standards. But after that, you can apply for a credit and it's a dollar-for-dollar diminution of your income tax liability. So, it's better than a deduction because it's a credit. I live in a nineteen twenty-nine house. I redid a bathroom and finished off a basement and have not paid North Carolina State taxes, because we also have a state tax credits, for five years. It's been great. My husband thinks I'm brilliant and I got a great new bathroom out of it. But with that National Register listing, that tax incentive can be used to encourage people to rehabilitate some of these historic buildings. Easement's another great tool, often used in estate planning for large agricultural areas. Buildings that are on the National Register, the Department of Historic Resources will accept an easement. And an easement is basically the gift of some of your property rights. So, for example, if you gave up the right to subdivide, to demolish, or to do anything really bad to the exterior of the building, those would be considered a gift to the state. And your property can be reassessed. The reassessment, and you have to talk to your Commissioner of Revenue, but based on a new reassessment, your property tax could go down. And more important for some people is the estate tax. Because again, with agricultural lands, a lot of times that's when things get subdivided and sold because the estate tax burden for the next generation, based on the full value of the land, is so expensive that they have to sell it off in order to pay the taxes. So, not a lawyer or an accountant, but it's a great tool. And finally, heritage tourism. And I wish I'd been smart enough to realize that you all had a tourism task force at five. I could have been here all night and talked about this. But I would like to say that the data that we've given you is great, raw data, but it can serve hugely in developing a heritage tourism program because the research and the documentation are there. And in terms of heritage tourism, there's a marketing component, but in order to market, you have to have a product. And so, this data can be used to develop the product, to understand what you have that you can talk to people, can help with the interpretation so that the people you market to come and actually have something to do. So, it's a great source of information for product development and for interpretation for heritage tourism. I've talked as fast as I can. I know you have a lot of other things to talk to. I haven't talked too much. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I just might be able to expand on this a little bit. Do it under the wire. You said that data collected from the survey will be used for recognition, which I understand.
And protection of important properties in short and long range land use planning. What does the word protection there mean?
Well, I'd have to ask you all because it was in your request for proposals.
Was it in ours? I mean, did it come from the county?
It came from the Historical Society.
Or the Historical Society. So, not from me, from With County. But I imagine one of the things that you see often is that when you're doing long-range plans, if one of the values that you have in your comprehensive plan is to protect historic resources, it's good to know where they are so that when you make a decision, it's an informed decision. That doesn't mean that you'll save everything, but at least you're not plowing through something ignorant of what you have. You can look at it and say, "Wow, we really need to have this road or this sewer line. It absolutely has to be there and we know this is historic and we're going to have to do it anyway. Maybe we can move the building because we know it's important. Maybe we can photograph it. Maybe we can document it. Maybe we can put a marker." I don't think it necessarily has to mean that you have to save the building, although, you know, in my line of work, I would encourage you to do that. But it helps you make an informed decision and not just plow through something and then have somebody say, "Didn't you know that was important?" You say, "Well, gee, no." So, a lot of it is, again, so that land use decisions and planning are made with a full understanding of the importance of what's there.
You turn it into the state or whatever, it doesn't abridge.
There's absolutely no abridgement of private property rights that comes with any of this.
So, if I own Greystone, I could go out and tear it down right now?
Please don't.
I won't. And I don't and I won't, but I just, you know, want to make that clear.
The only thing, there are two things that people get confused with. One is local ordinances and a lot of the municipalities in Virginia do have local historic districts with Boards of Architectural Review that do have control over the exterior of historic buildings. I don't believe that you have that. You could if you wanted to, but you don't. But that is a local ordinance. And the other thing that sometimes people get confused in is that, we talked a little bit about that National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six and federal responsibilities. The federal government is held to a higher standard in terms of historic properties. And sometimes if they have got a road project that might, you know, destroy a historic building, they might reroute the road, they might move the building, they might document it, but they are required to mitigate adverse effects. And so, it's really the federal agency that's being held accountable, not the private property owner. Is that clear? Because a lot of times people say, "Well, you know, this designation stopped this." It's like, well, it didn't abridge anyone's private property rights. It abridged the feds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess that goes down to the county or the person that's borrowing federal dollars in those litigation fights.
Well, sure. I mean, if, you know, if you all got a big community development block grant and wanted to wipe out a historic neighborhood, the feds would say, "I'm sorry, you can't use it for that. You've got to do something else." But that's the fed's prerogative. It comes with their money. You know, you see it with wetlands permits. You see it with cell towers. They have to do surveys because the FAA licenses those even though they're privately built. So, anybody who does any of that kind of work usually knows that they need to get the permit and do the survey and knows how to work within the process. Oh, absolutely. I'm going to say one more thing and then I promise I'm going to shut up. And I said this last night at the Historical Society. This project has been a thrill. It has been such a privilege to work here. Everyone whose doors I knocked on, some stranger with out-of-state plates, was so incredibly friendly and welcoming and wanted to share the story of their house and their buildings. And the resources you have are really, really phenomenal. And it's just, it's been a great privilege to work on this project. And I just want to, for the record, say thank you so much.
All right. On your agenda, we have a public hearing scheduled. That public hearing will be canceled tonight and rescheduled, I assume, for our next meeting. Who's gone?
June twenty-eighth.
June twenty-eighth, yes. So, we'll move to citizens' time. We have four citizens who have signed up to speak. The first is Mr. Virginia Riggins. Mr. Riggins would like to talk to us about sewer charges.
I wanted to come up here tonight because my aunt is eighty-three years old and she is on a fixed income. A few weeks ago, over the past few months, the sewer project has come through the Graham's Forge area. When it first started through there, we were under the impression that you all would give a discount to people on a fixed income as far as hookup fees go to this sewer. I found out last week that you all have decided that there's no discount for people on fixed income. I want you to understand that there are people on fixed incomes every day that's having to make choices between buying food, keeping the lights on, getting their medicine. We have a sewer line that come through our area that we did not ask for. We have people down here that are being forced to hook up to this thing or at least forced to pay a hookup fee that will never use it. My aunt's one of them. I know of several people in our area, right down through by our house, that are on disability. They're very elderly people, cannot afford a thousand dollars. I know that you gentlemen have made a decision to say, "Okay, if you can't afford a thousand dollars all at one time, pay us a hundred dollars down and so much a month." Again, I want to remind you, these folks are already struggling to make ends meet every month, just trying to put food on their table, pay their bills and keep their medicines. And I understand some of the projects you all do are great, you know, and I thank God for the water project that you all put down through there. I do. The neighbors that live in front of us, I understand that they had to pay two thousand dollars to hook up to this sewer project. Both of them are on disability, both of them unable to work. You know, we, my question to you is, why? Why did you make a decision not to help these people that are on a fixed income, that don't have the money to pay a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars to hook up to this thing? And why, for the people that voted you guys in, put their confidence in you to make decisions that would be in our best interest, have you all chose to make a decision like this? Am I disappointed? Very. Am I angry? Yes, very much so. And tonight, as I stand before you, I'm just one person in a community that sees people hurting, sees people in need. And I come before you tonight and I ask from the bottom of my heart, will you please look at this situation, reconsider your decision and give the elderly people in our community and other communities a break on the sewer line, the water line, or whatever it is that you're making a decision on? Because they don't have anybody to come in here and fight for them. They don't have a big, they can't pay a big fancy lawyer to stand up here before you every night and say, "Would you please change your mind?" Or, you know, pour out stuff out of a law book that says, you know, "We don't want you to do this." So, yes, I'm just one person tonight making a stand, but I want you to know that I'm concerned. I love our elderly people and they voted, a lot of them voted to put you into these offices. Now, I ask you tonight, just to take a look at these decisions that you have made. Give us an honest answer as to why you made this decision and see if there's not something you can do to help these people out. Well, when this first started coming down through the Graham's Forge area, I had come up here to pay my water bill because I'm hooked up to the water down through there. And we were talking, I asked the people in the water department, you know, about the price and what it was going to cost for people to hook up. At that time, the people in the water department told me that the Board of Supervisors was looking to give a discount to people that were on a fixed income because, you know, of the cost. And so, then last week, my aunt got a certified letter from the county saying, you know, that they had made a decision that it was a thousand dollars to hook up to it. And like I said, she's not, she's paying a water bill every month. She's never used one drop of water down through there. She's got a good well, she's got a good septic tank. And now, at eighty-three years old, she's going to have to pay a thousand dollars for this sewer line hookup that she will never use. And I'm not even sure how many of the other people, you know, the elderly people that are there, I'm not sure how many of them are because a lot of them, again, have their own sewer tanks and all and have for years. You know, and I'm under the impression, I may be wrong, but I'm under the impression that whoever makes the decisions, whether that you or somebody else in the county, had told whoever decided to put this through that they promised them that everybody on that area, in that area would hook up. And that's the way they did us with the water, too. And about ten years ago, before the water system ever went in, I stood in the room with the Board of Supervisors and argued with them, trying to get them to put the water down through there then because our wells were all going dry at that time. And they wanted me to pay a three thousand dollars at that time to have it put through there. I said, "Ain't a way, one, I didn't have it. And two, I said, "You're going to eventually put it down through here anyway." And so, they did, you know, and we did hook up to it. And just about everybody down through there has, or maybe everybody, well, you know, except for a few like my aunt. Like I said, she's eighty-three years old. She's never hooked up to it. She is paying a water bill every month. But, you know, I mean, they agreed that everybody would hook up to it. And I was told that you all, and this is, you all, when I say you all, I'm talking about Board of Supervisors, had put things in the newspaper that said, you know, "If you have a complaint or if you have a problem with this, come to the meeting." Well, at the time, I was working and couldn't come to a lot of the day meetings, but I didn't even know about the meetings because I don't get the newspaper every week. You know, it would be great if you could send out a letter to everybody in the community when you're doing something like that, if it was you, if that, you know, is your choice. And you say, "Okay, this is what we're planning on doing." You know, send out a letter, and I know it's expensive, I understand that. And you can't use the emails and stuff like most people do now because there's still a lot of elderly people that don't have computers, don't know how to use them if they had them. You know, so we can't go email route. But, and I know it's expensive to do paperwork and send it out to everybody in the community. But, you know, again, everybody deserves to know what's going on. Everybody deserves to know what is before you, that, you know, that's going to affect us and our paychecks and our lives for the rest of our life. Like I said, you know, a thousand dollars, that's a whole lot of money. My aunt draws around eight hundred dollars a month. Then she has to pay two hundred and some dollars for extra medical insurance that Medicaid and Medicare and stuff like that don't cover, you know, so she'll have her hospital bills and stuff covered. She has to pay some on her medication that she's on all the time. And, you know, I'm helping take care of her right now. So, I see her money and I see her checking account and I know she just doesn't have the kind of money that, you know, even for forty dollars a month, that's putting another strain on her finances.
Supervisors did, maybe about a year ago or whatever, for people who are low-income people and fit a certain criteria, which it sounds like your aunt does, for water hookups, we drastically reduce that, you know, that charge. And I have to say, in all honesty, I never thought about new construction and wastewater. So, I, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to refer that to the Water Committee, you know, to talk about, because ma'am, I have to tell you, you know, we, and we, the reduced fee for water hookups is good for all new water construction, you know, in the county now. We've made that a policy. But you're right, we haven't addressed wastewater and it's not, in all honesty, it's just probably because we hadn't thought about it. It's not that we made a conscious decision. So, what we'll do is if Mr. McDaniel, the chairman, will refer it to the Water Committee, the Water Committee will meet and discuss that and see what we can, you know, can come up with.
That would be great. I know they have a deadline of August the twenty-seventh that they have to pay this thousand dollars. Is there any way that you all can, or they can do anything before that?
Is next week, next Tuesday?
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for hearing me out. And like I said, they say you can't fight City Hall. And I said, "That may be true, but they're going to hear my voice anyway." Well, I saw a police officer back here and I'm afraid he would have picked me up and thrown me out if I'd have tried. But thank you so much for listening to me and I appreciate your help with this and not just for her. But like I said, we have so many elderly down through there, widows and all, that really could use your help in this.
Mr. McDaniel, I mean, Mr., June twenty-sixth, okay? The next Water Committee meeting. Yet still way ahead of time. We'll let you know.
Good evening, gentlemen. I was wondering if I could make an appointment to come in and audit the credit card statements from the county from January first to- to come in and audit the credit card statements from the county from January first to current? Or do, do you really want a FOIA request? Okay, I will come in and make an appointment, and I'd also like, um... Okay, great. Terrific. Okay, I will do that. Uh, also, uh, concerning my pet peeve about paying dues to VACO, uh, Goochlin County just pulled their, uh, sponsorship of the Virginia Association of Counties. And so, uh, you guys could be saving a whole lot of money by doing that, and it's really, not really right that the taxpayers should be, again, supplementing the insurance or the, the prescription insurance of county employees and so on. That's not really our responsibility, again, since we are maintaining a medical policy for employees. So, those are those two things. Please take them into consideration.
Uh, next we have Mr. Paul Matthews, who would like to talk to us about Pope Road. Matthews?
My name's Paul Matthews. I live on fifteen forty-two Pope Road, and we still got problems of getting the gravel part of Pope Road maintained. Down Longer Creek right now, on Pope Road, there's potholes down there. You'd knock a body out of your car. Nothing been done by it. One place we seen coming out to this Longer Creek there, uh, on the side of the road, the water's about this deep standard, out halfway in the road, alongside the road. And when it's dry, you, you eat dust. When it's wet, you go through the mud, so we still ain't getting nothing done. We ain't getting it serviced. The drain pipes are supposed to been changed. They come out and marked everything to give them changed. This drain pipe still ain't been taken out and changed. That been stopping up and running out in the road, and flooding the road, and worsening the road out and everything. So, that ain't been done. Pope Road from Powder Mill Road to Ivanhoe, where they did about a year ago, it's full of potholes. It's falling apart. Two inches of gravel and tar does not hold twenty, twenty-five ton trucks and not break up, and that's what you got. You'd, you see, where they're breaking up, you got about that much gravel and tar on top of your bond. It don't hold up. We need Pope Road completely redone, re- uh, surfaced and everything. We need it done. And I, I've, I've been there for twenty years on Pope Road, and ever since I've been there, oh, we gonna hard top that road, we gonna hard top that road. It still ain't been hard topped. Ain't nothing been done. Taxes keep going up, nothing done about our maintenance, our vehicles. You wash your car and go out one trip and back, your car's dirty. You, out in the yard or something, then dry times, and a vehicle goes down the road, here comes a, a layer of dust right over top of you, and it ain't no good. There's something needs to be done. And even, at one time in two years, they put down dissolver to, to hold the dust down. One time, in two years, they put down solvent in front of the houses to keep down the dust. We need something done about Pope Road. Thank you.
Uh, sir, who, who told you that they were gonna pave the road?
Ever since I've lived, it's always been rumored going, the, that Pope Road would be paved all the way through.
Told you that they were gonna pave, okay. Uh, what, what do they say when you call them to request the maintenance on the road?
Well, the roads are full of potholes, where the road, even the hardtop is full of...
When you call, do they, do they tell you that they'll be out to do it, or?
Oh, they'll come out and scrape the, the road and, and bring a few loads of gravel and put down on the, you know, the road that, that's, uh, dirt road. They'll do that. But even...
All they'll come and do that?
Yeah, yeah, a day or two, and Mr. Horni over here, keep him on the case, and, and he helps, uh, get it done, too. But Pope Road down along Cripple Creek there is in bad shape right now.
Don't doubt that. Of course, the, the other thing, you know, I'll, I, I feel like I need to remind you, is the county doesn't do that. The, the county doesn't have anything to do with road maintenance. Uh, that's, that's entirely VDOT. Uh, we don't, we don't spray gravel, we don't scrape roads, we don't fix potholes, we don't, uh, uh, you know, spray water on to keep, uh, keep the dust down. I mean, all those problems that you're talking about are very real problems, but, uh, uh, you know, but the county doesn't, doesn't do any of that, uh, and, you know, tax money from the county doesn't go for that. Uh, but I think, can we request that, uh, uh, Mr. Dalton, that, uh, that someone send Mr. Russell a, a, an email requesting maintenance out there? Okay.
It's hard on vehicles and everything else.
I, I...
I come out this season, brother Cox with me, uh, riding with me, he said, you better watch them holes, and it was a dozen holes right there. You couldn't, you couldn't miss them all. You had hit one, and when I, the one that I went through, it felt like the tar dropped that deep in the hole when I went through the... I mean, I, I was just going slow.
Uh, but, so, you know, we, we have to, yeah, we ha- we have to do the same thing that, that you do, just make a request to VDOT, but we'll, we'll make the request, yeah.
And it seems like anymore. You gotta call Richmond, and then Richmond gets back through a cycle, and time to cycle is over. It's three or four days done gone by and nothing done, so, uh...
Pope Road, and, you know, we do everything we can to, uh, to help the citizens and call VDOT, but they have the, the final decision, and their money is what they do, do with the road. And usually, you know, when we, we call, they do come out and do maintenance on the road. But it's, it's their decision. They're the ones that, uh, takes care of the road.
Well, they're gonna have to re- re-hard top Pope Road from Powder Mill out, because it's done fell apart. I mean, it's been a year, and it's done fell apart. It's full of potholes. You gotta dodge, you drive out through, you gotta dodge a pothole, or run through them. I mean, you know, you, you make that decision, so... We just, we just getting poorer, poorer service on the road period, and it's something needs to be done about it.
To, uh, to VDOT right now to request maintenance, so we'll see if that helps. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Uh, next, Mr. Roy Cox. Again, Pope Road.
Ain't much more I can say about Pope Road. I think he pretty well covered it all. But, uh, we do need, uh, some work on the bridge. Got some boards missing off of it. And that little road, Solin Road, it is bad shape, too, coming over to Pope Road. So, uh, seem me like it wouldn't be too expensive just to go ahead and black top it all the way through, or tar and gravel it, because it ain't too much widening to be done or nothing. A few cupboards gotta be put in. So, all I can say, just do what you can for us, because we really need it, and like we've been battling here for quite a while, to get it done. But, uh, so far we haven't, but we won't give up. Just keep on pounding. All right, thank you very much.
Is there any citizen who arrived late, didn't get an opportunity to sign up, would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close. Uh, our next order of business is the minutes of the May twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen meeting. Can I have a motion?
I'll second it.
All right, now, are there any additions or corrections to the motion for the minutes of May, May the twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the, uh, passing the minutes of two thousand, excuse me, uh, two thou- May twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, abstain. I wasn't present at that meeting.
All right, sir. Let the record show six yes, uh, and one abstention. Payment of invoices. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay the invoices.
All right, is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is anyone want to discuss any invoice? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. It'll be a roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye and aye. Thank you very much. We will move now to, uh, old business. And the first order under old business is a, uh, motion to, uh, adopt the six-year road plan. I have a motion that we, uh, we adopt the six-year road plan for our two thousand fourteen through two thousand nineteen?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion concerning the road plan that was presented by VDOT on May fourteenth?
Yeah, I'm about to discuss. It, it seems like, in reviewing this thing, that they didn't put a lot of effort in it. They just copied what was voted on, on April nineteenth, or somewhere back during the previous board. Is that right, Mr. Dalton?
This is, this is just what happened in, in...
That is just for information?
Yeah.
The roads that came off the plane, and how it happened. I put in there the action that concerning Connors Valley Road, and off the minutes, if you remember, time has a inclination for people to forget that we added Pope Road to the, to the plane. Not Pope Road, it's Connors Valley Road. I put that information just for y'all's information to remind, next time, for a six-year plan, there's a limit.
To a previous board's wishes. Okay, thank you.
It's not on this plan, but it's just information to remind everybody to go through this process. And that came from the, uh, when we had to take all of those roads off.
Kind of like a wish list, a wish list, a wish list.
That's what it is. Now, there'll be a few more of you retired from this fourth, fourth wish list. All right, we did have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
And aye, seven zero. Thank you. Next, we have the Smith with Airport Commission. We had a tie vote at that last vote at that meeting. I understand that we can withdraw the motion, we can vote again, we can do several things, so...
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm the one that made the motion, and, uh, I'd like to withdraw the motion and make a motion.
Wait just a second. If you want to withdraw, can I get a permission from the second, and I believe that was you, Mr. Hall?
Yes. I'll second.
All right, so we're gonna drop that motion, and I think that's technically correct, what we can do. All right, so the motion is no longer, uh, on board, and you want to make a new motion?
Uh, make a motion that we, uh, set up a meeting with, uh, Smith County and Whitfield, and, uh, to go over the recommendations of, uh, the county administrator has proposed.
Including the county mayor and will you say Smith County?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Now, point of clarification here, just to make sure, what we're gonna do, we're gonna ask all four governing bodies to meet together, or representation, you know, for a committee member or something of that nature, to discuss the problems of the airport, as we had seen them, or it was brought forth. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, we, after this vote, we expect the chair to sign a committee of representatives, so that we can set those meetings up with those county mayor, Smith County, and...
In discussion. Do you, uh, Mr. Reeves, do you have any problem with outlining what's in that motion, what we're gonna discuss, so there's no question about what we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
I'm looking for the recommendations.
Develop a business plan?
Yeah.
Have view of all funding parties of capital projects?
Here it is, uh, m- oh, did you find it?
Go ahead.
Okay, I've got, I'm, is, uh, these are what we would like to discuss, is, uh, uh, request that the airport provide a business plan to include short and long-term operations, uh, require that they obtain approval of the governing bodies prior to starting any capital improvement projects, uh, require they provide a copy of the rental agreement of Airport Repair Shop, and require that they include the fuel issue and hangar rental as part of the business plan. Uh, and rather than just come from us, as Mr. Reeves said, you know, if it comes from, from all, uh, governing bodies, I think all interested entities would, uh, would agree with that.
Is everyone clear on how we're vote, what vote do you have?
Is that part of the motion?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, we will have a roll call vote. Uh, Hall?
Aye, 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 aye.
And the chairman votes aye. Vote is seven zero. Thank you. We can move now. Is there any other old business, Mr. Dalton?
Clarification and understanding, as the term stands, the proposed FY fourteen budget will be presented to board supervisors to include funding for the airport.
Yes, sir. Is everybody understand that now?
Mm-hmm.
We are funding the airport from the next year.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, do we need to appoint that committee tonight, or at our next meeting?
It's not gonna affect funding for this year. I don't know what kind of timeline. I think we oughta get in touch with the other jurisdictions and find out what kind of timeline they'd like to be on, then we can, I can appoint the committee. That's no problem.
Well, I think for us to move forth, it'd be like Mr. Hale says, that we appoint things that takes forever for us to accomplish. We can go ahead and get the committee, so we can set multiple times, committee would be probably beneficial. The address, short-term instead of long-term, we'll be sitting here next year, talking about the same size.
So, I'll get the committee appointed. I'm gonna appoint two people. Okay, and Mr. Reeves, you've made the motion, so I'm gonna ask you to do it. And, uh, Mr. Hale, you've had several questions. I'd like for you to serve on that committee if you could also.
All right.
Uh, for you two people to serve on that committee, uh, representing Whit County, but we still have to contact the other jurisdictions and try to set something up as soon as possible. Thank you. Now, do we have any other business, Mr. Dalton, and o- under old business? All right, we will move to reports, and the first one is from the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Hall, you gonna give that report?
Sure, I'll be glad to. The first, uh, recommendation from the Economic Development Committee is to allow the county administrator to sign any documents with the Tobacco Commission concerning a prospective industry.
Coming from the committee, it needs no second, and this is just to allow the county administrator to sign any documents with the Tobacco Commission concerning any prospective industry that they'd be looking at with County. This would just take a roll, I mean, would not take a roll call vote, just take a aye vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Chair sees it as seven, no, uh, zero. All right, uh, the next order of business, number two?
Is to accept the financing terms with VML VACO Finance for Lot twenty-four. Those terms are included in the packet.
Coming from committee, it needs no seconds. Anyone have any questions concerning this?
And we chose option B?
B.
Option B.
One point nine three is not bad.
No, not even for you. All right, since this does deal with money, it's a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, seven zero. Thank you. We will now move to new business.
Budget committee.
Oh, I do have a budget committee. Let's stand up committees and go to budgets. And I touched my little thing on my bookmark. For some reason, I go back to page one.
I do, too.
You're doing the same thing?
I do, too.
We all got that problem. We all got that problem.
Did you go to new business and go back one? I have the same problem.
I'm just trying not to touch anything.
Well, we're learning, gentlemen, we're learning.
New business, scroll back one page.
Go to new business and scroll back one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, there it is. Who's delivering the budget committee report?
I guess, I will, I, I missed the first two. Uh, the budget committee met on June the seventh, twenty thirteen, and made the following recommendations. Uh, one, to negotiate the payment terms with Pro-Nets, and to proceed with developing the Whitfield County Tourism Website.
Alright, coming from the committee, it needs no second. Uh, is there any discussion? What's Pro-Nets? I need, I just had to ask.
It's a, uh, uh, an internet company that designs websites and this sort of thing.
It's in gay wax, yeah.
Alright, any questions? Alright, we'll have a, uh, does deal with money, it takes a roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 Aye and aye, seven zero.
Second one is to approve the payment of four hundred and twenty-five dollars for disposal of indigent remains in accordance with the Whitfield County Circuit Court Order.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak on this, the sheriff talked to me this morning, and, uh, he said he didn't have a, a line item to pay for, to pay for this, and he told Grub Funeral Home to send the bill up here, I don't know where y'all received it uh, or not, I know the court order said for the sheriff to pay it, and for us to reimburse the sheriff's department, but he informed me he doesn't have a line item to cover this.
I believe Social Services has a line item. If you would check with them, Hall used to have, uh, something there when he was, that I know for indigent funerals and so forth, so you might check with Lewis and see if there is no line items there, they've got some money.
It was a local appropriation.
It was a local appropriation.
So we're paying for it anyway?
But they may have money budgeted in their budget file.
Uh, I'll take care of it.
I mean, you're paying it?
That's what I was saying.
I'll take, I'll, I'll take care of the judge.
Might be easier to pay.
I may have to call y'all to get me out of the holding cell down there.
Number three?
That we have to-
Oh, we haven't voted yet, I'm sorry. Take a roll call vote, Mr. Honey?
Aye.
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 And aye, seven zero, thank you for reminding me.
Alright, the institute a five percent increase for constitutional officer employees not already receiving it. Uh, this increase is based on their January the first, twenty twelve salaries, and will become effective from May the first, twenty thirteen. And, um, uh, you know, just a short explanation, and that is something that we have to do based on, uh,
State.
Yeah, on the government, governor's, uh, amendment to the budget.
So this is actually coming through us by the state?
Well, the state's saying that we have to do it.
That's why I say-
Yeah.
And it's, uh, effective May the first, because he signed the bill on May the third, and we-
May, right, correct.
From May the first to make it
Yeah.
easier to come out with.
So basically a month.
Any more discussion? Alright. Call for the vote, Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 Aye and aye, thank you.
Uh, next one, to proceed with the grant application to the Virginia Tourism Commission contingent upon receiving written commitments from the other localities that it has been included in their FY fourteen budgets, and a written description of DGIF's involvement. This was a request to, uh, to apply for this, uh, this, this grant, and it listed several other entities that, and the amount of money that they were gonna put into it, but, uh, we just, before we approve this, we want to make sure that they have made a commitment, and, and it's not just something that is, uh, is on paper.
Any other discussion?
Do you have any idea what the grant's for?
Yeah, and I forgot that.
Fly fishing brochure?
Oh, yeah. Uh, uh, yeah, Department of Gaming and Fisheries is putting together, uh, you know, fly fishing brochure, that they want to include, you know, this area and, and everything, and, uh, it would, it's for that, thank you, I'm sorry, I've forgotten.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Alright, we'll call for a vote, uh, Mr. Honey?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Aye.
And aye, thank you. Is there any other new business?
Well, there's, there's one more, Mr. McDane. Alright, number, uh, number five, uh, yeah, uh, we made the recommendation to proceed with implementing Code Red included in the FY fourteen budget.
Any questions? Okay, I think this is a good thing to do, I want to make that statement, uh, I heard on the radio just yesterday or the day before that we were under tornado warning. The faster we can get this implemented, the better.
And the good portion of this contract, then, you know, we can send notices to select communities, Mr. Riggins was here earlier. We can actually target that area and send a notice out about action fees and the price.
It doesn't have to be an emergency, emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot, it's a good thing. Uh, any discussion concerning Code Red?
And, uh, and Whitfield, and we're recruited, are in partners with us on this Code Red.
Alright, who voted last time, was it Hall or Honey, I don't know.
I'll start.
Aye.
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 Aye and aye, thank you, now, is there any other new business? Seeing none, aye, can adjourn us?
Oh.
We do have some new business, though, so.
Yeah. What are you looking at? What are you looking?
What kind of ball game you start?
Am I, golly darn, I've already got through the Whitfield County School request and everything, I, I'm sorry, folks, it's, I'm learning this thing here, hang on.
You're doing a hybrid? iPad and paper, it's just-
If you put the laptop up there, you got me-
Because I lose it in this iPad, but we're getting there. Now, we're on a new business, and we'll start off with the Whitfield County School Request. The Whitfield County School would request a supplemental appropriation of twenty-three thousand dollars to the two thousand twelve thirteen operating budget. This request is pursuant to the Rural Development Grant Award for the purpose of purchasing one maintenance vehicle. The matching fund of seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two will be provided in the transportation budget of Whitfield County Schools. Thank you for your continued support, if you have any questions, please contact me at your convenience, Lee Branner. Mr. Dalton, you want to speak to that, anyway?
This money, about two years ago, we bought the vehicle, and we finally got all the paperwork processed, and we finally done the check. And, uh, we received the check, and we're gonna copy that, and I believe, actually, it says they spent it in the previous budget, this money will actually be used to fix a hole or to weld up that school. They have the, they have a vehicle, but they they already paid for it, so, yeah, this will be a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve this.
Okay.
I'll second.
And move the second that we approve the county's school request, any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 Yep?
Aye.
And aye, okay. Stormwater extension approval.
Uh, we applied for and received our extension for the year, we have to manage between now and next year, we will have to implement the order allowing all the current conditions, if you want to have a burst, all the DCR, and the bomb will be transferred to D and Q, it will take a very, very long time.
There's a big article on the run-up times, actually, concerning, the concern with small metropolitan urban areas, that with stormwater, uh, we need any action on this?
Uh, we do not, your action will come later on, as we work with D and Q, so, Mr. Hall, you're back.
I know, you know, Mr. Chairman, VACO, the, the Environmental Agriculture Steering Committee that I'm on, is still discussing this, and, uh, you know, the draft, uh, what they will take to the legislative body in the, the first of two thousand and fourteen. If anybody has any, any questions, or any, anything that they want to put forward to, to the committee, that we can get in-
We're basically paying for this because of, of the east coast and, and central Virginia.
Uh, you know, one thing, uh, VACO-
Northern Virginia and central, yeah.
Is go ask for more money to implement this, I, I think that is one of the, the biggest recommendations that, uh, VACO will have.
I guess my concern is not so much the, you know, the cost of implementation, although it'd be good to get money, but is, uh, you know, the cost is gonna be to the citizens.
Uh, you know, when they started this, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dalton, this, this started with Chesapeake Bay Preservation, and, uh, I think the Richmond decided if we're gonna make part of the state do it, we just make all the state do it, so I don't-
As soon as they move the Chesapeake Bay out here, I'd be glad to do it.
The PMDAs and everything, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation, dictating all improvement stormwater quality. We were exempt for a long time, but when they reenacted it, it just the whole state of Virginia, I think they really have don't know the implications of far southwest rural counties, what it's gonna cost. We don't have the development that eastern counties have, but now it's probably gonna cost a couple of thousand, five thousand dollars per home to implement this Whitfield, when you get a building.
Mr. Chairman, I guess we're in discussion here.
Yes, sir, we are.
The lunacy of this whole thing is that it encompasses much more than building a house or building a shopping center. If you want to build a farm pond, the way I understand it, and I hope I'm wrong, you've gotta come to county and get a permit to build a farm pond. You gotta have a plan, you gotta hire an engineer to do the farm plant, the pond. And just the common sense, there's no better stormwater management than a pond. It keeps runoff from happening immediately. That's the whole thing in development, uh, if we're going to disturb an area, we normally have to build a surge pond, this is not new, we've done it for a long time. But this is ordinance creep by administrative action. Stormwater off of a paved area is greater than is off of gravel, or gravel off of grass, and now I'm told that a lawn is counted, what'd you tell me the other day, like a paved area? Somebody's got to have the courage to challenge these people, and I feel real good about VACOR getting out of just the money business, and let's talk about whether this is a sensible approach to stormwater management. Once it's enacted, getting those people to reverse anything is not likely to happen.
Well, it's already, you know, it's past, I mean, all it is, is the implement, implementation phase is putting it in place. You know, the, in agriculture, there are exemptions, I mean, you can go out and clear a wooded area, make a field, and you don't have to do a stormwater management plan, but if you build a building, a barn on that, then you do.
And, and I know, you, maybe you all can, but can you explain the logic behind that?
Well, we used to-
If, if ground, if ground is disturbed, ground is disturbed.
We used to deal with it with sedimentation and runoff rules, but this goes much further. Now, you, you mentioned structures, and I can understand them dragging structures into it. But if you went out and cleared, especially with our topo, and you cleared two hundred acres or twenty acres, it would make sense to me that there be some kind of structure to hold stormwater until you got the site vegetated. That's good farm practice. But if you're out to implement the water that falls on your property to be able to use it and build a pond, I don't think that I want to see our county guy out there telling me how to do it, or how, whether we can do it or not. Now, what you said is not what I've been told. I mean, you, you guys that know me know that I have a fetish for building ponds, because simply, if you keep the water on the property it fell, fell on, it's good water management, it's good water conservation. But if you've gotta spend all these dollars, a lot of ponds are not gonna get built, or a lot of sneaking around and building them is gonna happen. So why can't VACOR just put some sense into this and try to get an exemption for all agricultural efforts instead of tying it to a building?
Well, you know, I'll check on that, Joe, and, and that may be, you know, you, if you build a pond, you know, on your farm, it, it may be exempt. Uh, I know if you build a field, it is exempt, and the only, the only thing they discussed in, in the meeting is, if you build a barn on that, then you would have to have a stormwater management program. It didn't say anything about anything else, but I'll check and let you know.
I guess they consider a barn and a house, if you build a house-
A structure.
Yeah.
So we ought to build our house and attach a barn to it, so it would be exempt?
Well, no, a barn, a barn is not exempt.
What I'm saying is, no different, a barn's no different, they're looking at it.
So anything that has surface area that water will run off of?
Right, yeah, anything like, you know, ruffs on it, probably. Not many ponds have ruffs on, do they?
Oh, and they're to retain water, that's what you hope they do if they don't leak. So, it just, it's one of those things that they haven't thought about, I, I'm sure that the people that put it together never thought about ponds.
But-
It's hard to build a pond within the limits of ten thousand square feet at a time. You gotta do it all right the first time, it's generally as big as you're gonna make it the first time. You can't do it in increments.
But Joe, you know your problem, you're thinking logically.
Yeah, and I'm here with the government to help you, that's, that's a problem.
Well, I think sometimes we, anybody in government, relate to where they live, and if you live in northern Virginia or eastern Virginia and you see this problem, then that's where you're thinking, you know, and when you see it out in rural, you say, that's ridiculous, you know? And somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to have some people who can think on both sides of that aisle. And, uh, just explain it to some people. Mr. Dalton started letting us be aware of this almost a year ago, it was coming down the pipe. Alright, we have a memorandum of agreement between the Whitfield County Public Schools and the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors, uh, a draft here, Mr. Dalton, you want to speak to this agreement?
The school board's gonna issue instruction documents tomorrow. We're gonna be proceeding with vegan dollar community center. We can go ahead, build the grounds, or whichever committee you like, sit down with the school board superintendent, get this thing signed, we don't want to be at the end of instruction and try to get something signed. It has to be, it has to be a model for future generations. It has to be, it has to be the model, uh, for future endeavors that we do at school. We're all the same thing. And there's a couple other schools that actually don't, Speedwood's school that could fit this same field, gyms at the back, next to the parking lot. Put something in the hall that they have access. This would be the same type of agreement. Request that you refer to committee, please move forward to finalize this agreement.
Well, it seems to fit under building grounds. Does it have to go to committee? It says here that, uh, draft-wise, the superintendent signs it, I would sign it, you would sign it. I, I don't see anywhere the school board chair would sign it, but, you know, can we expedite it? I'm willing to expedite it or to send it to building grounds. When do they meet again? All depends on how fast you want it. I thought you said to have, can you call a special meeting, or just expedite it quicker and we'll just have a Johnny-on-the-spot committee?
I thought I could leave about it today. We can meet with them on the second of July.
On the second of July?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, now, I have two drafts.
Thank you both.
What was the original draft that came from the school board?
Which, which one then are we looking at? The second one is a little more, uh, detailed.
The first draft was- Just press that here. First draft was the draft that came from Lee, and I sent it back to him the second. It's our draft.
Okay. So-
Changes a lot over in section eight. Still shall be clean, not looking at school water, boy, which sometimes puts us there after they leave. And this one says, we'll be the custodians, clean it just like the family.
So, we're looking at the second one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's why, all right.
And there's, there's a few more changes and differences. The second one is the best interest. And on the second one, I got rid of the chair person.
That's fine for me, too. That was probably a smart move for you, Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Chairman, can we just make a motion to authorize the county administrator to sign the-
Memorandum?
Memorandum, or do we need to have it go through a committee?
Has, has Lee talked to you about the draft that you proposed? Has he had, did he, did he have any questions?
Uh, not really. He's, I think the biggest concern he had was that we, the difference between, says that his draft says the school will have full use of it at any point. And we can have it when they say we can. My version says that we'll meet twice a year and we'll set up a schedule when those activities are, because quite frankly, I, we've been on that losing end before. High school basketball team, football team, whoever, rest of the team wants to use it, and they kick us out.
I know that sometimes that's necessary. Don't you, Mr. McDaniels?
I've been on both sides of that, James.
Yeah, me, too.
Anyway, just, I think that was the biggest issue. But they know those basketball facilities and graduations and activities, and we don't wanna interfere with them using them for a play or a program. But they don't school, you know, the church prior to every six months. It just takes a little advanced plan.
Are we discussing this draft in general?
I assume so.
Because we're talking about giving Mr. Dalton authority to sign it. Did y'all get into, to their unique insurance requirements?
Their unique insurance?
Yeah, the, 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 the school board has some unique insurance requirements. That if an entity in the community wants to use a school building, you've got a real burden of liability insurance that they're requiring you to put on it.
Our insurance company, they have they go insurance, we have they go insurance, they have main insurance. Our, according to the facilities, we're aware of maintenance, county insurance, is just like we own the property, and we're cut.
I understand that for county agencies and activities.
Right.
But if a church group wants to use it, do they still have to get that, uh, community center? Would they have that million dollar burden, or would this-
It says that we will not sublet it. And that's one of the discussions, because they do have that problem, Joe. If somebody else comes in, if we're running the show, or the Ruritans come over, fire department, and say they want to use it, and we're part of that, under our umbrella, we're fine. We just can't sublet it to you, to the Ruritans, or you end up with those onerous insurance requirements that the group can't, you can't do it.
You can't afford it.
But going back to Joe's example, what if, what if a, a church in the community wanted to have, uh, let's say, a, a youth basketball tournament? Uh, they have to provide, what, is it a million dollars worth?
Maybe it's half a million. It costs too much for you to put on the event. That, it's onerous. You can't afford to use a school facility. And, and now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be logical and nitpick here a little bit. We agreed to put a million dollars worth of county funds into building a dual-use facility, which makes total sense to me to utilize that property as much as we can. But if, in, in the side wings over here, we're restricting the use of it, I think we oughta look at some way to not have it so restrictive. Now, if a church group wanted to have a singing, or they wanted to have some group come in there using that new facility, how would we feel about co-sponsoring it with the rec department? Or is it practical that we look at this and come up with some kind of VACO insurance that's available at a reasonable cost?
Well, I'm warning, I'm all that insurance board, you can't get it.
Well, you can get insurance for anything if you're willing to pay enough for it.
But not vacant.
Or if it's not a county sponsor.
Okay.
You cannot cover a separate group.
All right, let me ask you now.
Just like you can't get insurance on my house or my car.
Who's covering all these AAU basketball games?
They should have one of these, you can go to insurance, Joe's right, if you pay enough money. My guess, Danny, is it's run to the athletic director, and it's, here's the keys.
I'd say you're pretty close to right.
I mean, uh-
Because you're talking about, I mean-
And it's always, and I'm not speaking of a school here, it's always been the people in the community have keys to the school. But the county or other certain, you can't get the keys to the school. It conflicts with everybody's use of the gate. And I would say that more chisel, they, this year they had the AAU burn, used to have a gym planted in. One of the school members, boy, he's ran through it. I would say that there's no issue.
I, I, I'd say you're right. I mean, the, if the school board just make- Is the school board making everybody aware of this right now, or how did you-
If you go to use one of their facilities, they make you aware real quick.
Okay, but they're, they're gonna let me, as the head basketball coach, run an AAU basketball tournament, and Salil Dalton's gonna be a little kid out there, and he runs up and gets a layup, and somebody cuts his legs out, and he breaks his back, and ends up being paralyzed. Where's that coming from? That's all I wanna know.
I don't think you got any insurance.
Well, there's insurance. It's built.
Yeah, yeah, who's building it happen in, how'd they get there?
So, neither, those make the same rules that we sign, the gyms, not everybody follows those. Wouldn't it spin that way for everyone?
Well, I know, that's why, but no, I never thought about it like this, because y'all brought it up here.
But, well, my concern is, you, you know, in, uh, in number seven from, uh, the guiding principles, it says, uh, second sentence, uh, With County Public Schools activities withstanding, uh, With County Board of Supervisor activities will supersede any other civic, religious, or community use of the facility. I guess my question is, are we building a community center that the community's not gonna be able to afford to use?
I'd take a stab at answering that one. Unless it's a county activity, that's exactly what we're gonna, is that right? Unless you can run it through the rec department or some, and you, you mentioned fire departments, this stuff. In some cases, a fire department, in most cases, I happen to be the only one here who believes it, but I believe that fire departments are part of the county. Uh, but could they become part of the county for the use of that?
Well, my belief, Joe, is they're a department of the county.
Okay, so they would be all right?
I believe this, the rest of the school is a department of the county. That's what the code of Virginia says it is.
Yeah.
And we may take our hands off and let it run in our own departments separately, with some guidance and funding. But I think we heard in there, they're a function of the county.
Could, could we ask them to reduce the, the amount of required, like, if they were, if they're requiring a million dollars to, cut it in half to five hundred thousand? I mean, I know it would be cheaper as far as insurance purposes go, premium.
If we can go off, maybe a high school. I'll be twenty miles every weekend.
That question's gonna get referred to their insurance company and their attorney. Attorney's gonna say, here's the minimum, the least they're gonna say is, here's the minimum requirements in the state of Virginia. Most of us, we give those same coverage as every time we cross B Dodge roads, northern settlements. I mean, that's pretty standard practice. Everybody wants that good. But we can talk about that.
Well, do you, do you have any idea what, uh, the state's minimums are for this kind of coverage? I know what they are for E and O and general liability for providers, but if it's, if it's no higher than those are by state statute, that's totally doable. I mean, I don't know whether, we could accept another insurance company other than just VACO for an event. There's event insurance that's controlled by exposure and the size of the event. Obviously, if you were putting on a rodeo or a rugby game, it would probably be higher than if you were having some benign event. But there are companies that do provide insurance.
Where's the event insurance?
All right, so would it be intelligent to put this in this memorandum that that insurance would be acceptable if the school board and the county were the protected entities?
This is what I'll tell you. I think it still would go back, you'll have to send it back to your insurance company, and they're gonna say, we're not gonna do it. It's just, how can you protect a third party that's not under your control?
Have them provide, prevent insurance, which you have a-
Go provide that for our insurance.
No, no, what I said was, would our insurance accept that?
We'll, uh, we'll check. I don't believe so.
Maybe this should go through building and grounds after y'all get all this settled.
Well, you, because right now it just sounds basically to me like if, if a church in the area wanted to, to talk to the principal over there and, and, uh, and schedule Sunday night just to have a volleyball game, then they've gotta go through the process of getting event insurance or, or paying the fee to the school board just to come over at what we're calling a community center? And if we can't, if we can't do that, then let's change the name and say it's a With County Public School and With County Board of Supervisor, or With County Board of Sup-, I mean, With County Public Schools and With County, uh, Center. It's not a community center.
Well, I think we need to go to the building grounds committee.
I, I agree.
Since we're all here, though, there's one other avenue, Mr. Dalton. Any of these things could happen if it's under the supervision of the recreation department. And, and that makes it go away. Like, you know, I don't know how you would do that, and it might mean that the board's gonna have to pay somebody to be there. I don't know the answer to that. But that's the most sensible way, that these things be scheduled through that department and arranged through them. Then, I believe, not being a lawyer, but then I believe that insurance would cover it. Now, he's on the insurance committee. I trust his judgment.
Well, if it's scheduled through us and the event run through us.
Yeah, but going back to the scenario that I was talking about, church calls the school principal, says, we'd like to use it, you know, on Sunday night, and he says, you know, okay, you gotta run it through the county. They call Gary Cody as the, uh, you know, rec director, and say to him, we would like to use it. Then he's gotta make a decision as to whether or not they can use it as a, as a function through the county. Yeah.
If you were the principal at Earl Tree, would you make everybody sign the facility use rule?
No, I was just thinking of the number of times I went to the emergency room for men's league basketball, and nobody ever signed anything. You know, I, I, no.
It hurt when schools just had the facility use rule, and have had ever since I've been in this state.
We, we did have, I think.
We had-
Never saw one.
I think the principal stated upon himself that he violated the school board's policy.
Yeah.
Get on and get this book, Eddie.
I guess the principal would take it on himself.
We don't want more donkey basketball games, you understand?
Hey, they carried their own insurance. Went to the hospital on that one, too.
Yeah, they needed to carry insurance. All right, so we are gonna refer that to the committee and like to, if y'all could work together with the school board and their committee at the same time, that'd be probably good. Anything else, Mr. Dalton?
Yes, you have in front of me a, uh, a letter. That goes to our auditors, that everybody here understands our relationship with auditors. If there's any questions, that I will sign it like I do each year, and the attorney will discuss the farmer's cost.
There's nothing different from what we've done in years past?
You wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion, that we allow Mr. Dalton to sign for this.
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none of all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Dalton? Oh, we had to do that, do a new voice.
I thought he was gonna bring six.
We're gonna bring all this to thank you, and this, like, uh, Mr. Vaughn, this is Farley.
Mr. Farley's in the, he's in the video. Gary Hansman, so you met Mr. Jones today?
Welcome, Bull. Started, uh, June third, Bill, I'd say a few words, this glorious place. I mentioned the Florida people, and you could, I interviewed you, and we backed you, January. So, it's a pleasure. I'm thankful that y'all picked me up for the position. I hope I live up to your expectations. Some of y'all have already indicated you have high expectations, so I hope I can live up to them. Some of y'all already have high expectations, so I hope I can live up to them.
Glad you're here.
One of these guys already stroked you under the bus.
No, it wasn't under the bus. But I had to say, I'm not an engineer.
And Mr. Farley will be there shortly, but we do have a building full of new employees next door in the new nine-one-one, consolidated nine-one-ones. Try to get those people over. Or we'll all go over there.
So let's just go over there, so we can see how it operates.
No, let's go out and work the town.
Tell them to have a special day, and they'll come. And they did go operational today.
That's kind of fun.
They have their, their glitches that-